You're good. Yes, you're safe.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, you don't have to. Yeah, you're safe.
Well, my house is here.
How much?
Seven inches.
Geez. Saw Kruekenberg today.
Where?
Bobs before me.
Oh, nice. You want to swing by? Say hi.
I guess not. I was at dinner with Gary and...
Got it.
Keep him busy on the farm?
No, no.
I'm looking forward to it.
April's almost five.
I can see it, but it's not...
I can't see it. It's better than me.
All right, it's seven o'clock. We call this regular city council meeting to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Hatterline?
Present.
Schultz?
Present.
Lovelace?
Here.
Carncross?
Here.
Lancaster?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Luna?
Here.
Formas, present mayor.
All right, thank you clerk. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you would like to address city council for any item that is not on the agenda, this would be your time. If you want to speak about something that is currently on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity under that agenda item. Does anyone care to wish to address city council? Please state your name and address for the record.
And I intend that this is a person who has lived there for another week. I had a problem with somebody staring at her, not staring at them, and gentlemen that was bawling. And then being called names that are very disrespectful. We called the police. Also, I brought it into the city hall meeting, I mean, into a meeting with Mr. Lou, and read a complaint and got nowhere because he didn't even bring a piece of paper, a pen, nothing into any of the meetings. Didn't address the issue that he said he was going to. He said he was going to immediately go downstairs and speak to the person involved and stood upstairs for a good 10 minutes. I was actually standing outside the doors. And when he saw me, then finally went downstairs. But I just thought it was very disrespectful for a city official to call someone a retard anyhow.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
That's my comment. I think you ought to address this issue with certain employees with the city.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to address city council? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number four. Item number four is the committee and economic development committee meeting minutes from May 14th, 2024. The committee's action sought to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster. Any comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Land, Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number five A through five S is a consent agenda. Is there any item on a consent agenda that city council wishes to remove from the consent? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to accept these consent agenda as presented, items five A through five S.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through S.
Second.
A motion by Hatterline and the second by Schultz. Any comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Thank you clerk. Item number six is dispensed since nothing was removed from the consent agenda. Item number seven is a payment of the bills. Your actions requested to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $670,071.01.
Make a motion to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $670,071.01.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Hatterline, second by Gorman. Comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item number eight is planning and zoning commission recommendation and finding of facts from April 2nd, 2024. Here for review, the planning and zoning commission's recommendation to deny the petition submitted by Tomas Zaworda, Greenway Properties LLC. The petitioner seeking the consideration for a variation to the required side yard setback in the R4 zoning district for properties on 8th Street and Sage Lane in the Turtle Crossing subdivision. This will require city council action to approve or reject the commission's recommendations. Is the petitioner present?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Deny the petition submitted by Greenway Properties LLC.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Matt to...
Alderman Perkins.
Alderman Perkins to approve the denial of the recommendation of planning and zoning and seconded by our woman Hatterline. Any comments or questions here? Hearing none. We have the petitioner present would like to make a statement. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
We have a staff report in front of us. Staff report very clearly states what the requests are. There's minor variations between variations on side yards and where the lots and one of the lots is requested for one foot. The staff report contains a diagram which identifies where the lots are located. The area identifies exactly where the lots are. Staff report addresses in a serial fashion any and all of the projections of the recent zoning condition. And I read it so... City council like yours is to do on... System. Begin it. So that's the... Submit. Gentlemen, it's a... Solid policy. City has its... Quality housing. Community. Variants is our... Minor in nature. Well, it's just dispensed. Flooding. Otherwise compliant all of the respects with the city. Therefore, that's what we expect. Go to deny and then submit a positive.
Any comments or questions here for the petitioner?
So I do have a comment that I'd just like to make sure is in the record, and that is that in the unified development ordinance, chapter 14, zoning standards, the approval standards for variants that are, that we are, the zoning commission and the city council must make the following findings to support a ruling in favor of variation. One, the strict application of the terms of this ordinance will result in undue hardship unless the specific relief requested is granted. In response to that, I would say any hardship in this case is of the petitioner's own creation. Other people have built on parcels of the same dimensions without needing a variance. There are multiple things that can be done, including changing the design of the structure rather than obtaining a variance. Number two standard is the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property impose a particular hardship upon the owner as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I will point out that the parcels are all level and rectangular, and there is no inherent hardship inherent in the character of those parcels that would necessitate or justify a variance. The third standard is the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances inherent to the subject property and not from the personal situation of the owner and has not been created by any person presently having a proprietary interest in the property in question. And once again, the plight of the owner is due entirely to the design of the structure that he wants to place on those parcels. So that is why I support the zoning board's recommendation.
So why don't you put those duplexes somewhere else instead of those smaller lots? It's already been rejected by the planning and zoning.
And you can redesign the structure, Mr. Bernie.
And since I've been on 2019, we have gone with everything that the planning and zoning has recommend, you know, with their pretty much almost every one.
You're welcome to your opinion, and I have mine.
Any other comments for the petitioner? Is there anyone in public wishes to address the council? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Joel Berg. I live on Old Orchard Road here in Harvard. I sat on this council for six years. I sat on the zoning board. Alderman Hatterline hit it right on the money. You have a city attorney sitting right there. Ask him. He's a licensed attorney. He's insured. His opinion counts. She's right, Mr. Bernie's wrong. You have an ordinance. It is literally that simple. You have an ordinance. Follow your ordinance. It's that simple. Follow your own law. Let's go down the city's response for just a moment, shall we? I was a little stunned by it, to be quite honest, and the reason I was...
Mr. Berg, you're free to talk about what you want, but I will state that what is being decided before council is the variance, which is setbacks.
Correct, and I understand that, Mayor, and most respectfully, you'll allow me to be heard on this. I'm going to point out why that in and of itself defeats this. Five minutes. This is the ordinance that when my wife Sarah called Donovan Day the morning before the zoning meeting, the morning before the zoning meeting, he had never heard of this. He did not know this existed. He did not know that this was a requirement before he issued a building permit. Now I want you to take a look at everything that they've written and compare it to that one page. And here's why it counts. Here's why it counts. Because you cannot come before the city council, ask for a variation, get the variation, and then move on and build this unless you ask for all the necessary variations. And we know they didn't. We know for an absolute fact they didn't. Look at the city's response, please. It's in your packet. The city's response to the transparency requirement. Your UDO is beautiful. It's a beautiful UDO. And the comment that transparency requirements are suddenly out of fashion is going to come as a real surprise to Woodstock, Crystal Lake, Maringo, McHenry, and every other municipality who has a transparency requirement in their UDO.
Mr. Berg, this particular comment is not appropriate or pertinent.
Respectfully, Mayor, it's in response to what you responded to, and respectfully, if they did not request the city, excuse me, Mayor, the city expressly requested...
Excuse me. The variance is about setbacks. It has nothing to do with...
And they did not request a necessary variation. You have a city attorney sitting right there. If they do not request a necessary variation, then they have to go back to the drawing board. Mr. Clifton, am I right or am I wrong?
I'm not going to comment on that. What I am going to comment on is the fact that what's before this body right now is a variation request regarding the setback. If you believe, or the council believes that other variances are required, obviously that would be another issue, but what's before this body right now is a request for a variance of the setbacks. I understand that there are other issues, other concerns with this development, but that's not before this body right now. What's before this body right now is a variation setback to the setback requirement.
Then let's go back through them one more time. Let me read your ordinance as it reads, because contrary to what Mr. Bernie says, this would be what's called an administrative review. And an administrative review means that the trial court actually sits as an appellate court. They'll receive all of this and they'll review it, and they'll review it pursuant to your ordinance. They don't write the law on this. Your ordinance says, "The recommendation of the planning and zoning commission and the decision of the city council must," must is a mandatory word, "you must make the following findings to support a ruling in favor of a variation." Now, it was said before that they're a recommending body, and that's correct, they are a recommending body. However, they also are the fact-finding body. They're the body before which the hearing was conducted. They're the body that took in the evidence. They're the ones that heard everything. And after hearing everything, it was unanimous. You have a couple of them here tonight. It was unanimous because it literally is as simple as, they make it sound like, well, this is just a couple of feet. That's right. Go redo your plans. You are in a stormwater-sensitive area, and that is relevant because it's a stormwater-sensitive area, and you're increasing the impervious surface. You're also increasing it with two driveways that are not supported by the statute. In other words, all of this is occurring because the city can't just simply admit, "We made a mistake. We didn't know that this was there when this came in." And now they want you to rubber stamp it, and we get to drive through 8th Street, abutting my property on 9th Street, we get to drive down 8, 10, 12, 14 parking garages, because that's what they look like. Let's not cut to the chase. You have what your ordinance says it needs to look like, and it's not this. We would ask that you please support the zoning board's recommendation and support Alderman Perkins's recommendation, or motion, and Alderman Hatterline second. Thank you very much.
I think the gentleman's wrong, but could I say my comments fall?
Is there anyone else that wishes to address city council on this issue? Please state your name and address for the record.
Dustin, 1509 Sage Lane. I don't know anything about variances or any of this. Alls I know is that someone that moved across country and his housing is helping my family, and there's more families that could use the extra housing because it was such a difficult time to find housing. So...
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record.
So these driveways are 40 feet wide. I like know the ordinance. Donovan, Rand, what is like...
I'm sorry, you need to address city council.
They're over 40 feet wide. So all the water that's coming off these driveways are going to flood.
I understand it's an issue, but I know I do understand it's an issue, but that is not the matter. That's before city council.
Because you're building duplexes on single-family lots. There are duplex lots in Turtle Crossing, but you're, he's putting these duplex lots on single-family lots, which are not allowed. It's a variance. You guys are letting everything go, and I can tell you another thing.
Nothing has been let go. The issue is before the council to make a decision.
No, we had a house flood on Sage Street because the water coming off of Greenway, and I talked to Donovan today, that there's a swale. When it floods, it goes down and it goes all the way through the field and it floods out. So you guys, when you keep playing the game, this guy is an arrogant fuck, if you ask me.
Sir, sir.
I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting. Chief, please escort this man out of our meeting. Chief, please escort him out of the meeting. If you want to address city council, you're more than happy to address city council, but please maintain decorum. Chief, please remove him from the meeting. Is there anyone else that wishes to address city council? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jay Alpherton, 107 West Thompson Street, member of the planning and zoning committee. Just want to second that our opinions line up with what Lisa had stated previously, and that is, there's not notes from the meeting of that, but that is what our opinion fell on, was that.
All right, thank you for those comments. Anyone else wish to address city council?
I just have a question, just to clarify, because I'm looking at this. So there's a total of 21 duplexes going in, and this is more just for the recorded record. 21 duplexes going in. This would affect five of them, is what it looks like? Eight? This is lots four through nine on 8th Street, so this would be five lots, technically be eight units, correct?
Only many, it's six.
It's six total? Okay.
It's lots four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay. I just want to clarify so that it's in the record.
I believe though there was a lot on Sage Street as well, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sage Lane, my apologies.
Just to clarify so that it's in the record, we know how many properties this is looking to affect versus how many properties are actually being slated to build, so.
Sir, my name's Robert Felker. I live at 1313 Sage Lane. I just had a question for the board, because I was curious. Property taxes went up this year $740 some odd dollars. And in addition, the fee for what's supposed to be for paying for the water department, that was $25 a month. Now that's $35 a month. So you add the two together, and I was just curious as to why Sage Lane taxes went up a lot, $750, and others, it didn't go up at all. Some even got less, paid less.
Sure. To answer your question, the water and the property tax, two separate issues. The water is a maintenance, actually it's an infrastructure fee to pay for the wastewater treatment plant. Property taxes is a county function, is not a city function. And in Chumung Township, there was a reassessment of properties this year, so all the properties within Chumung Township being reassessed, most of those saw an increase in property. Okay, so I take it up with them then? Yes, that would be Chumung Township. Okay, thank you. Sure. Any other comments or questions concerning the matter at hand? Council, any comments, questions? Sir, did you want to have a rebuttal?
Just very briefly, I just passed out the statute. It indicated that the decision of the planning commission and zoning commission is...
Can you speak at the mic so we can, so all the audience can hear?
The gentleman said that the decision of the planning and zoning commission was an administrative decision, and the statute, I've underlined it on a couple of copies, the last sentence, it also makes it clear that regardless of whether it's an administrative decision, this is decided on the basis of diesel sale factors, and that is the balancing test. And I just go back to where I started, which is that when you bring this development on balance, that it offers substantial benefits to the community, and while there hasn't been any discussion, any identification of what harm or injury would result to the objectors who've come in and testified here today. So we don't believe there is one. We believe that all of the effects of this development are being adjusted, addressed by following your ordinances. And so therefore, we would ask that you vote no on the motion to deny and present a motion to approve, and approve it by the requisite vote. Thank you for your attention, and I apologize. I just don't think staff or a board should be subject to abuse like we heard today, and I apologize just as a member of the public, and thank you for what you guys do, and you don't deserve it. So thank you.
All right, one last call.
I would just like to say one thing, and that is that the idea that we should stick to the ordinance and not offer a variance because that's the thing you should do. I mean, we've done hundreds since I've been on the board of variances, and why do we even have them if you can't do them?
Why do we have a code if you just, if we're going to vary everything?
Who said we're going to vary everything?
Apparently you do.
This is a request for a variance, and it seems to me it comes down to whether or not, I'm not sure what the huge, huge issue is here, because it's not three feet and six feet, it's something else, and I don't know what it is. I don't have a clue. Because we've gone through these things in the past, we've never had this kind of attitude and bitterness when we do it. I don't, I'm completely at a loss here. These houses have garages in the front, which is a completely separate issue, as I said. I used to own one. Now I feel kind of bad. Maybe I'm offended because I owned a house that everybody thinks is ugly. I guess. So I don't know. To me, this is about the one foot, three feet, and so on, and I think it's just an opinion of whether or not you think that, you know, that this is an acceptable thing in this particular case or not, and I think that's what we should base it on.
Just a moment. Sarah, if you state your name and address, please.
Sarah Berg, 508 Old Orchard. And I agree, I don't think it has anything to do with the looks. It has to do with impervious surface. It has to do with putting two driveways where one would have gone. This is an extremely... where one would have gone. This is an extremely sensitive hydrological area. You are increasing, and I keep saying that, that this zoning has changed to allow every single lot in Turtle Creek to be a duplex. It's a lot different than having 82 single-family homes and 22 duplexes. This project alone is making the maximum of what was even done with a stormwater, and that's the second thing. No stormwater was done. I know the city is doing it now.
So let's say that, I'm just trying to get this straight in my head. So let's say that they put in smaller duplexes with two driveways, but in other words, they were small enough to fit within the lot line.
But they aren't.
No, no, I'm just, that was just a hypothetical question.
Hypothetically, the driveways don't fit. The reason everybody else that has a duplex is on a lot and a half is because we followed those rules. We followed that only a third of the lot line could be a driveway. So my duplex is on 50 feet, so that a driveway fits.
And I understand all of that. I mean, that's why we have to move it. But I'm just saying, if a smaller home, or a smaller duplex was placed on a rest.
But it's not a smaller.
If, would you be okay with it?
If there's a stormwater review done, I would be, because quite frankly, we're, it takes an engineer to look at this. It doesn't, we can't just hypothetically.
That's been proposed.
It should have been done before.
Twenty years ago, Charlie was the last one.
No, no, but I think.
Yeah, they haven't done one.
But wasn't there something?
Do you have anything further?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the questions, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Is there any more audience that wishes to make a comment? If not, we're going to shut off all audience comments. At this juncture, I'm going to ask the city engineering and stormwater to please come forward and give us his review of the stormwater plan for this subdivision, so that the city council may have that information available to them when they go to make their decision. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Darren Olson with Christopher Burke Engineering. And so we completed a review of, the original plan was put in place and submitted to both the city and the county in 2005. And we reviewed all of that paperwork. We requested it from the county, requested it from the city. We looked at, what really was the key was what did they assume for the lot size and the lot impervious coverage as part of that original submittal, because that's what they based then the stormwater detention on, which that is the large pond that's to the northwest, and also the storm sewer sizing on. So we looked at, went through all the calculations, looked at the assumptions, and in general, the assumption that they made for lot size was a quarter acre lot, and the impervious was 30, that goes with that, is 38%. So that gets them to the, you know, how they sized their stormwater management system. When we looked back at what's being proposed, all of the lots in general are proposed are less impervious and are generally, most of them are larger than that size. So you would, there's the ability to take some, you know, if there was a, they didn't specify which ones in the stormwater, which ones are duplex. They just specified, you know, generally the overall amount of lots and what that impervious coverage was. So I can, you know, go into a little more detail that, you know, in general, you know, our conclusion is that there is the ability to take lots that are single-family lots and, you know, convert them to duplexes and vice versa, because again, the overall stormwater management for this was based on a certain assumption that had quarter acre lots and less than or equal to 38% impervious.
Any questions for a stormwater engineer?
Well, I'm just wondering, in this case, the lots in question are smaller than a quarter acre.
Yes.
And I believe that even though I have heard comments that this is under what was the number of duplexes that were originally allowed, the zoning, as Mrs. Berg pointed out, the zoning would allow a duplex on every lot. And that is additional, that's more coverage potentially than mostly single-family homes. It's more impervious coverage. So I'm curious how that math works out.
Yes, and you bring up a point that, yes, the duplex is more impervious coverage than a single-family home, but the, it's not more impervious coverage than what was in the permit submittals and what the storm sewer system and the stormwater detention is based on.
Any other questions for the engineer? Donovan, I'm going to ask you to come forward and just discuss the number of homes, single-family and duplexes that were slated for this particular subdivision.
The initial plan for the development called for 22 duplexes. Greenway Properties or Greenway Development is building 21 duplexes, and it was originally approved for 82 single-family homes. So we're one less duplex. Just because it's zoned R4 doesn't mean that duplexes can go on all of the lots, because it was only approved for 22. Therefore, a stormwater system that's in place now would have to be rereviewed. Whoever wants to develop them in the duplexes would have to show that the existing storm infrastructure could handle every lot or every vacant lot to be a duplex lot. So.
So what you're stating is that the city would limit the number of duplexes in the subdivision according to the stormwater plan?
It's already limited, yes.
Thank you.
So when somebody comes in for the 23rd duplex, we're going to deny them that permit?
It would have to go under storm review. The original development was for 22 duplexes.
But it sounds like the engineer is saying that even if they're all developed as duplexes, that it's adequately sized. I mean, that's what I heard.
If it meets the requirement of how it was designed. So they could be smaller duplexes, but they couldn't exceed, and I believe it was that 38% impervious surface. Or, and also, city council can pass an ordinance that that subdivision cannot exceed 22, or limit it to 21 duplexes.
Well, no, we can't, because the zoning allows duplexes. We can't just do an administrative, okay, we're just going to limit you to limit this subdivision. We can't do that. And I turn to our attorney, but that's not appropriate.
If you're going to change zoning, obviously, there's a process. You have to go through to change zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donovan. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Just kind of a general question is, assuming that this variance request is denied, does that mean, and this is just so that we have it on the record, does that mean that these duplexes cannot or would not go forward with construction, or would they be modified and construction move forward on a different plan?
I would say that'd be up to the developer to determine what he plans to do, if he's not able to build the particular product that he wants to on the lot as it's, if the variance is not approved, then he would have to change his plans or do something else to mitigate the issue.
I guess what I'm getting at is if it's denied, would it create an impossibility for construction?
No.
I would, okay. Just so that it's been stated, that the question was asked.
It would not.
Okay. Just so that that's clear before we vote.
Sure. Any other comments or questions? Sorry, we've taken all comments from, hearing no further comments or questions. To be clear, this was denied, recommended to be denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission. To overturn that requires a two-thirds majority vote. You currently have a motion and a second to uphold the denial, and that would simply require a majority vote.
Correct. And just to clarify, because we're approving a negative recommendation, if you vote yes, or you vote in favor of this motion, you are voting to deny the variance request. It's kind of backwards, so we'd just like to clarify that. So if you vote in the affirmative, if you vote yes, you are voting to deny the variance request, which would be in line with the recommendation of planning and zoning. If you vote no, obviously, you're voting the opposite.
All right, thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Lancaster, yes. Gorman?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna, yes. Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
I'm staying.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Motion is approved to uphold the denial of the Planning and Zoning Commission with one no vote and one abstention.
All right, thank you. Item number nine is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, finding of facts from May 7, 2024. Review the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve the petition submitted by DeLong Car Wash LLC. The petitioner seeking consideration for conditional use to operate a car wash at 317 South Division Street will require city council action to approve or reject the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll just say thank you, and don't worry about it, we're up for the next one.
All right, thank you. We have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Perkins, second by Carncross. Any comments or questions here? Hearing none?
Actually, I do have one. I do have one question that wasn't clear to me. Is there an issue with the entrance off of 14? It looked like there was, I mean, it just, it wasn't clear to me. It looked like there was an issue with stacking and for the entrance that there, it wasn't an issue off of the side road, but it mentioned a stacking issue off of 14. Is that?
Hatterline, what mentioned that?
The, I believe it was in the minutes, there was something, I think it was in the minutes, there was something about.
Yeah, I think I can help.
Thank you.
It was, it was a question as to how those, the two entrances would work with the flow of traffic, and it had to do with where the cars went in and where they came out. That was all cleared up.
Okay.
And, but that's.
So do they go in from the side street and come out on 14?
I didn't say I paid attention. All I know is it seemed resolved to me at the time.
Okay, because that would make sense if one's the entrance and the other's the exit.
Yeah, they come in from the, what would be West, you know, so they go around the corner and in the side, you know, road, what is that Admiral Drive? And then they, and then they, there's like a place where the vacuums and so on.
Okay.
And, yeah, they come in on Admiral Drive and then they go, that isn't, let's see, here we go.
Oh, this one, yeah.
So come in this way, and they're coming out that way. And they go out that way, right.
Okay.
And there was just a question. It wasn't, there wasn't, on the drawings, it wasn't clear.
Yeah.
And I think that all got, right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes, that makes sense. Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, because I was going to say, if it's, if they can come in either way, that would be a mess.
Yeah, I think it's meant to go, because it's a one-way through.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-114.
All right, thank you. Item number 10 is a home occupational permit application for the property located at 1501 10th Street. Petitioner Adie Sanchez is seeking a home occupational permit to operate a hairstyling business from her residence at 1501 10th Street. Your action is requested to approve or deny the request. I don't think the petitioner
Then questions for staff? Do we have anyone that had any issues with this? Any No, we're on the home occupancy permit for Sanchez.
Hairstyling. Didn't hear of any.
Okay. Motion to approve then.
Second.
All right, motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster. Any comments or questions here?
Is this just, she planning on just doing this herself, one chair basically? Do we know?
Yes.
Pull the application up?
I saw it, but it wasn't clear.
Like it says, number of employees who are members of immediate family, zero. Number of employees who are not members of immediate family, zero, full-time, zero. So to me, that would mean she's the only employee. Why does someone think it includes herself? Right, because is she immediate family?
Not her own employee.
I don't know if she's family or not. I would assume that she'd probably be able to max run two chairs at once. I don't think that, I think that would be detrimental to the business to try to do any more than that.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
No.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to one.
Thank you.
Mayor, quick question, sorry about that. Do we know how many we have of these now of the family businesses runs hairstyles? Because I know we've approved a few since I've been on.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't have a count of that. I don't know. It's a handful, but I don't know.
Thank you.
Sure. Item number 11. Let the record reflect that Alderman Schultz is recusing himself from the meeting. Milk Day certificate request for Saturday, June 1, 2024. Eric Crum from Hub Lounge is requesting a milk day certificate pursuant to section 25.06B dot 2 for the outside consumption of alcohol and to encroach on the city sidewalk. This will require action from the city council to approve or deny the request pending payment of fee and security.
And the fee still has not been paid as of today?
That is correct.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve it, approve the, what is it, certificate pending the payment of
Quick.
the fees or security deposit, and security deposit.
My standing question, this department has any issues with this? We typically, since I've been in town, we haven't had any, you know, major issues, but I always like to ask every year the same question.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. Hatterline, Carncross. All right, any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderwoman Luna? Hatterline?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11B, John Janacy from Front Street Tap is requesting a milk day certificate pursuant to section 25.06B dot 2 for the outside consumption of alcohol and to encroach on the city sidewalk. Fees have been paid. Will require city action from city council to approve or deny the request. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Carncross, second by Gorman. I'm answer questions here. Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz? Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 12 is a
Oh, yeah, we got one more.
Item number 12 is a Class 8 liquor license. Sheila Hansen, doing business as Stratford Banquet Hall, I'm sorry, Stratford Banquet Facility at 21007 McGuire Road, has submitted an application for the renewal of a Class 8 liquor license. The lease check is satisfactory and fees have been paid. Your action is requested to approve or deny the application.
Make a motion to approve, approve the liquor license.
Second.
Motion by Hatterline, second by Lancaster. How much questions here? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that Alderman Schultz has returned to the meeting. Item number 13, utility superintendent Jim Grant's retirement. Your action is requested to accept superintendent Grant's letter of retirement with sincere regrets effective November 2024.
And just like we've mentioned before, can we reject it and he has to stay?
Exactly. I'll make that motion, Matt. Yeah, to reject the.
I'll make the motion and approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Perkins, second by Carncross. Sadly, it's a, it's a bittersweet. Always happy to see people reach retirement. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 14 is a memorandum of understanding. Action is requested to approve the MOU between the Teamsters and the City of Harvard concerning the wastewater foreman position.
Motion to approve.
Essentially, we added a foreman position to the contract.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Carncross, second by Perkins. Comments or questions here?
This is something we have budgeted.
Yes, it was originally written into the, the budget this year. Again, this is just creating a position, separating the position and making, and clarifying it in the contract with the understanding that when the contract comes up for renewal, that it will be written as part of the regular contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-115.
Thank you. Item number 16 is the Community and Economic Development Committee recommendation for building codes. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to approve an ordinance amending section 19.01 Building Code Adoption and 19.02 Exceptions.
Just, just to clarify, the ordinance that was in the packet has been replaced by an ordinance that should have been at your seat today. Donovan can probably touch more on exactly what it changes, but it mostly just clarified there were some numbering, lettering issues that are, that are cleaned up and make it more comprehensive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Schultz, second by Carncross, comments or questions here?
Just one quick question. I kind of asked off the record, but I want to just clarify for the NFPA 13 sprinkler. It's, I know it's still the 2013, correct? That's how I'm reading it. And exempting residential still? Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-116.
Thank you. Item number 17 is being removed or basically removed from the agenda because the party, Sir Fender, had an, an issue that they were unable to come tonight, so we will move that to a future City Council meeting. Item 18, Community and Economic Development Committee Recommendations for Economic Development Loan Program, LDLP. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to move forward with the EDLP and application process as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster. Comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-116.
Thank you. Item number 17 is being removed or basically removed from the agenda because the party, Sir Fender, had an, an issue that they were unable to come tonight, so we will move that to a future City Council meeting. Item 18, Community and Economic Development Committee Recommendations for Economic Development Loan Program, LDLP. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to move forward with the EDLP and application process as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster. Comments or questions here?
Just one quick question. I kind of asked off the record, but I want to just clarify for the NFPA 13 sprinkler. It's, I know it's still the 2013, correct? That's how I'm reading it. And exempting residential still? Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-116.
Thank you. Item number 17 is being removed or basically removed from the agenda because the party, Sir Fender, had an, an issue that they were unable to come tonight, so we will move that to a future City Council meeting. Item 18, Community and Economic Development Committee Recommendations for Economic Development Loan Program, LDLP. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to move forward with the EDLP and application process as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster. Comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 17 is being removed or basically removed from the agenda because the party, Sir Fender, had an, an issue that they were unable to come tonight, so we will move that to a future City Council meeting. Item 18, Community and Economic Development Committee Recommendations for Economic Development Loan Program, LDLP. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to move forward with the EDLP and application process as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster. Comments or questions here?
Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 17 is the Committee of Realignment and Strategic Vision Task Assignments. Your action is requested to discuss and approve as presented. I will make a note here that this change is a result of what I believe is a bunch of ambiguity concerning the oversight of each of the various committees and, in fact, kind of create these committees to provide and distribute the work amongst all the other persons to be able to have focus areas to function, excuse me, to focus areas to, as part of the function of the city, and provide oversight for those areas. I find, excuse me, that the fact that most of the ordinances are going through the admin committee kind of defeats the purpose of all of the committees having the ability to legislate. And so from that perspective, it's my desire that each of the committees have the ability to legislate and provide right laws, amend the laws, or polish those laws for those areas of oversight under their committees. That's the major change in, in this restructure. And then also, we wanted to assign, under the strategic vision, for our Committee of the Whole workshops, various areas of responsibilities for those things that are listed in strategic vision. Comments?
Well, it, frankly, it seems very targeted at taking a lot of responsibility, a lot of issues away from the admin committee and limiting it to just finance, which I feel personally is very, I, I'm offended.
Well, I'm sorry you, you feel that way. It is nothing specific against a committee. It's empowering all the committees to have the same ability to write laws.
And I'm wondering why this isn't a discussion at a Committee of the Whole and why it's just being proposed by you?
Well.
And not a discussion by the council.
Because city ordinance gives the mayor that power.
Just to clarify for the record, this is a discussion for the council, so any council member can offer their opinion. So this is a discussion.
Yeah, it's a discussion and we're being asked to approve as presented.
Correct. And you could certainly, if you're not in agreement with it, you can certainly propose changes. You can make motions to approve it with certain changes. Just because it's presented this way doesn't mean that you're obligated to approve it this way. It's up for discussion and ultimate approval if this body deems it appropriate.
Can we see the proposals?
Of course.
Would you like to go?
Kind of ordinance would finance have then?
Well, finance covers the budget, right, which is one of the major ordinances that this body passes.
So second question is, is where is, because admin used to also have personnel. There's issue with personnel. And I went to our committee before we did. Any possibly make us aware if there's any issues going on, like contracts with, you know, the Teamsters, the FOP?
So those issues, I think, will come to, still come to the City Council directly. But personnel issues and items of city employees fall under the direction of the executive branch, not the legislative.
The reason we're doing this is that way it cuts down on time, so we don't have to do, like, one committee and then wait another month so that we can review it.
So what we were finding was, an, an issue would, would reside in a committee because that committee had oversight of it. But then it would end up going to a different committee because that committee felt that they were the ones to write the laws for the other committee. And truthfully, no laws are written. Everything is done as the council. The committee's structures are ability for each of you, each of the groups to focus on a specific area of governance. So it only makes sense, in my mind, that that group that has governance over that particular issue should also have the ability to write the ordinances for those issues.
I thought they did.
Mostly.
But to me, I, I don't know how it became anything. It was originally planned to be that way.
Indeed, indeed. So this, this removes any ambiguity in that regard.
And it also removes community relations and community outreach from administration and moves that to community development.
I, because I feel it, it more appropriately belongs in that committee.
So back to the personnel question now. So which one of these committees would be conducting interviews?
Well, just as we have done in the past.
Right.
If, if there's a department head that we need to hire or a city administrator, it would go to the committee that kind of has oversight of that particular department. For instance, if it's parks, it would go to parks.
Right, right.
If it's community development, it would go to the community development.
That's correct. But for like Lou, there is no oversight. So I'm not, I'm not.
So it would be my, it would be my thought process that that would go to Committee of the Whole, since he oversees all departments.
So are we going to do more Committee of the Holes like we're supposed to be doing quarterly?
That would be my intent, yes, Alderman.
So I just, I just, when we did the admin, we had personnel and it wasn't, and I know it's executive to a point, but it was also my understanding also to kind of keep us in the loop of what's going on, you know, with day-to-day operations, if there's a hiccup. So we know, hey, there's, something's going on. Instead of knowing the last minute once the City Council comes up meeting, that was just us, it wasn't us to, you know, you from the mayor, saying, hey, we're gonna consider this at the meeting, here's my thoughts, why I'm asking you to do this, so we have time to really sit and think about this, because we've got essentially, you know, the weekend in two days.
Right.
With a holiday weekend.
With no explanation.
Fair enough. We've had a discussion.
Right.
I'd recommend that.
We had five minutes of discussion.
I'd recommend, I'd recommend.
Till June.
I'd recommend that we table the matter at your discretion to a future meeting, so you have time to discuss it.
But what, but I guess, but at least my, a larger point, is when we have something, instead of waiting to the end of the month to give it to us, if you had this two weeks ago, it would have been great to set, because then we could have sat down with you. Someone had a question, hey, hey, Mike, what are your, why, tell me really what, what's your really thoughts on this, you know, what do you really want to do? You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, that's what I'm trying to drive at with everything. It just doesn't come in the packet, it's given to us earlier when it's real, and then it's in the packet to begin, you know, after that. It's just a function to make this board run better. Because I think getting it today really, you know, I mean, obviously, we got it Friday, but, you know, again, it's a holiday weekend.
Holiday weekend, and everyone's busy doing this.
Right, right. Holiday weekend, you're, you know, I mean, you want more time to absorb this. So, yes, I make a motion to table this to the next meeting, or to, we want to do it next meeting, or we wanted to have the committee of the whole.
Say, bring it up to, actually, what do you think, committee of the whole?
Do we have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled?
No.
We can schedule one.
Yeah, that's what I would do. So, I would table this for the committee of the whole.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Schultz, and second by Lancaster, to table to committee of the whole. Clerk, call of the room.
Alman Luna?
Yes.
Adeline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Can I just say something really quick, though? I just, I do agree that we need more time to discuss this, just, so I think we made the right decision to table it. But that's something that's kind of been in the back of my mind for some time, because I sit on the admin committee, and I chair the community development committee, and there's been times where there are ordinances or directions that, and unfortunately, because I sit on both committees, it becomes a blur. So, I end up discussing ordinances related to community development in the admin committee. So, I have to say that I do agree that ordinances, specifically ordinances that relate to the departments themselves, especially since we now have department heads that are going to be heading these departments, that those ordinances should be discussed in the committee that's related to the department that handles it. So, if it's a parks-related ordinance, I do feel that it should be in a Parks and Rec committee, versus the Parks and Rec coming up with the idea, and then the admin committee having to facilitate the ordinance, because I think that's redundant. And I do agree with Mike, that it, that actually does take away the democracy of drafting those ordinances. I don't normally see that, because since I sit on both committees, I end up doing both. But we also do change committee, chair positions on these committees periodically, so I think.
Rarely.
Well, usually, we cycle out after elections, and we rotate around the chairmanships, so that people get a chance to chair some of these committees. So, I think that's something we should also keep in mind, while we're thinking about this before the committee of the whole, that we don't always sit in the same leadership positions forever during our tenure, so controlling the ability to do certain things doesn't necessarily stay with the same people.
But now, we're taking, under that model of the different departments having a committee, right, that's assigned to them. Now, administration has no committee.
They, they still would, it just wouldn't be that so much of everything else needs to go to admin.
Can we continue discussion in the COW?
Yes.
I agree.
All right. Committee reports.
Call the COW.
We'll start over here.
I don't have any, I have nothing further.
All right. John, anything tonight?
Not really, other than the sewer that's going backwards on 14, what's going on? Or the manhole, actually. No, could be a sewer.
So, I think I've spoke about this a couple times, but it's interesting the way it happens. It did dry out for a little bit, but we also had more rain. I think one of the guys said that they measured two inches at their household over the weekend alone. This is a line of three structures, three sanitary structures that are abandoned. The northernmost structure has the lowest rim elevation. There is some sort of a spring or a water source that's popped up over by Harrison Street, and the northern, easternmost duplex, when that sump pump is running, so is that structure, if the water has exceeded the rim elevation. Previously, we've had staff up there, we've pumped down the southernmost structure, since it's the lowest one, we've pumped that down four times with our VAC on, removed the water, taken it elsewhere. We've had it tested for fluoride, and chlorine, and water treatment chemicals, and Jim and his staff have pretty much confirmed that this is not a water leak. It's also not a sanitary leak, because there's no sanitary water, there's no sanitaries tied to that. It is groundwater that is leaching into this abandoned system. I have concerns about blocking this off and pushing it somewhere else. Right now, there's, there's, other than the excessive rains that we've had, I've been trying to wait these out, and see if maybe, once the water goes away, we can determine what the best course of action is. Until, until then, we're kind of just dealing with the, the structure having that groundwater flowing out of it.
Okay. I guess I'm, I mean, I'm concerned about the water flowing out. I'm also concerned, though, that we got construction coming up on that section of Route 14, and water flowing out of that structure while they're trying to put down asphalt's gonna be a problem.
We, when it comes to, when it comes to that, we will pump down the structures if needed, because there's quite a bit of reserve, that, the northernmost structure is quite deep, and it has a lot of reserve in it for that water flow. The last thing we want to do is tie it into anything else, and sort of kick that can. I've considered having the structures lined, or filling them with concrete, in order to seal them, but I don't know if that's gonna be the right answer, because then it's just gonna push the water problem somewhere else.
So, are you thinking this is just a result of all the rain we've had this year?
Yes. The, this is, I've heard, in the past, we've had this issue pop up when we have heavy rain seasons. Last time, we had a leak detector out, and he traveled, you know, we had, somebody who specializes in finding leaks, and listening to valves, and sort of sonding this stuff off. We had him out again a month ago, he couldn't find anything. There, there is nothing as a result of anything from our system, including, you know, chemical affirmation, testing affirmation, that this is not a result of, you know, a water leak from us.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Jay?
Thank you, Mike. I noticed that the agenda's missing department head reports.
We noticed it too.
Yeah. So, I have nothing other than to thank Jim for everything he's done, and I'm very happy for, he's getting to retire and do what he wants to do. So, thank you, Jim.
All right. Lisa?
Yeah. So, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure how to proceed with this, but the, there were several issues that were brought up this evening, under the Turtle Crossing proposal, and we have a memo from Donovan, and that information is also in a letter from the mayor to the Bergs. And I have some serious concerns with some of the issues in there. For instance, and I do wonder if, if our attorney approved the letter that says that it's okay that we didn't enforce the 15% transparency, because we haven't enforced it in the past, and we intend to bring something to the council to change that. That is outrageous. I mean, that's not, that, that is not how you do business. If you have an ordinance, you enforce it. If you want to change it, if you think it should be different, then you go through the process to change it. You don't just administratively say, eh, we're gonna ignore this, which just leads to the perception in our community that we don't enforce our ordinances, which we heard over and over again when we were going through the chicken conversation. You aren't enforcing what you have now, why do you want a new law? And then I hear something like this, and I see our response to it, and I think, okay, well, we're just admitting that when it's, when we decide to, we're not enforcing our ordinance. Additionally, we've talked about having a, a non, an anti-monotony provision put into the code, which I wanted to put on the agenda for the admin committee, and then was told, no, that's already gone to the community development committee, and there's still nothing that's come out of that, which to me, just seems like, okay, well, staff have decided they don't really want to do this. Talking with John Colleen, who is, was a home builder for a long time, and he happens to be my next-door neighbor, and used to be on the zoning board, he said the old code did have an anti-monotony provision, and he knows that from all of the building that he did in the community, is that there was a provision at one time, before we redid the code, that did require you to have some separation between. Anyway, I'm just very frustrated that, that, at the way we're, we're doing business, and, frankly, feeling like, yeah, feeling like there's an interest on the administrator's part and the mayor's part to just marginalize me. Yeah. Yeah. Lou, with you saying, no, we shouldn't talk about ADA stuff, right? Because we don't want to get into trouble, and, oh, we're dealing with the anti-monotony at community development, which we're obviously not, other than one conversation to bring it to their attention in April. So, that's, that's all I have to say, and I don't think there needs to be an admin committee meeting, because unless, unless Mr. Leone or the mayor have something that they think that needs to be discussed at admin.
At your committee.
Right. And, and when I try to set an agenda, I'm given flack about that, and I'm just tired of it.
If you want to schedule the meeting, Lisa, that's your prerogative.
No, like I said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that. If things are supposed to be going to the community development committee, I'll go to those meetings, and I'll talk with Dan about making sure that things are getting on that agenda, if that's how you want things to run, if you don't want administration to be handling ordinance issues.
I would say that that particular type of ordinance should fall under the community development committee.
Okay.
And I believe, staff, where are we with that ordinance for the monotony?
It was done in committee, so we need to bring it before council to make a, we need to, the city needs to file a petition to request Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the UDO. Go to Planning and Zoning Commission to amend, and then back to city council for final.
Okay. Thank you. So, it needs to go to Planning and Zoning?
Well, it needs to come to the council to send it to Planning and Zoning. It's how that works. So, and this was brought to the committee in April, so we're just sitting on it, on the admin side, which I have a concern about.
We'll ensure it's on the next city council agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what about the transparency provision in the code?
I believe we could put that on the, the community development committee's next agenda.
Is it?
Anything further?
No. Thank you.
Sure. Rosa, anything tonight?
No.
Matt?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Charlie?
I wish Jim all the best. May all your future days smell like roses.
I was going into October's meeting to do all that.
I do have one thing, though. I do, you know, we have these meetings, and there's really no one monitoring, well, there are people monitoring, you know, how well we do with the communications, and whether the mics are on, and that sort of thing, but there's no way for us to know about it. There's no way to get a hold of anyone. And all of our phones, I assume, are on do not disturb, and, you know, no texts, and that sort of thing. We need to establish some method for somebody to be at this meeting, to receive input from the people who might be watching, you know, so that they could say, I mean, it could be a volunteer, it could be somebody from high school, that, you know, that wants to sit in on city council meetings anyway, but some method of being able to report, hey, you know, you had that meeting with the zoning commission, and the guy gave a talk, and nobody heard a word of it. Not one word of that whole 20 or 30-minute thing, because his mic was off the whole time. And, you know, Jay happened to look at his phone, and, because I texted everybody, I'm sure you, you know, you know, hey, I can't, I don't know what he said. So, that's, I'm asking is, we just need to put some method of communication.
I, I'm with you, Allerman. I think at one point, or actually, there's a desire to have someone actually run the audiovisual separately.
That would even be better, but I didn't want to go that far.
There's an, we're getting, or making our way towards that, but it's a budgeting issue, and so, but I do like your idea of trying to find a volunteer that might be willing to do it, because that would be something quite helpful.
Typically, what happens right now is, we have friends and spouses that I have been texting, and like we've, Deb's husband typically texts her, Megan, Rob's significant other, will text, and even Jennifer sometimes will text, and when they're not here, sometimes I get a little message from some birdies that sit over there.
Yeah, but, but I.
But unfortunately, in that particular instance, and it was actually the Parks and Rec meeting that I think you're referring to.
Yeah, that's what it was, I'm sorry.
Yeah, unfortunately, some birdies were doing other things, so there, there was a lapse in that sense.
Yeah, but I think that person has to be here.
Yeah, typically, they'll notify.
No, I agree with you.
It doesn't do any good if they're.
No, no, typically, they're, they're watching, and then they'll notify either myself, or someone sitting across the room.
No, no, but that doesn't work, Lou, that's what I'm trying to say, because your phones are off, and you can't get the message. Someone needs to be here, and, and then, then the audience needs to know that this is the person you get a hold of. Text this person, and then they can tell the city council or the committee meeting that there's a problem with the equipment.
Yeah, so ideally, you would have an audiovisual person running this.
Yeah.
And they would have headsets on to be able to hear.
Yeah.
And then they would immediately know, hey, we're not getting audio. Fortunately, we're not quite there yet.
No, I, I know.
But I appreciate those comments.
Okay.
Anything further?
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Lori?
I was just gonna address Lisa's comment about the anti-monotony, and I could have sworn that we had talked about it, and it was supposed to be in with this stuff, so maybe I'm just misremembering, but other than that, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay.
Nothing further, Mayor.
All right. I am 21, is a treasurer's report.
Nothing further tonight.
Oh, thank you. Attorney's report.
Nothing further.
I should ask, since the department heads is not on the agenda, can we still have the department heads make a report?
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was gonna use it as part of the administrator's report. Okay, well, we'll do that under administrator. Administrator's report.
All right. Well, I was gonna ask the staff member, starting with Donovan, if you can submit your report.
I didn't prepare anything, because I didn't see it on the agenda. Pat DeLong, who's the owner of the new car wash, was here this evening, and I didn't see him. I would have loved to introduce him, but we're excited to have them in town and their investment. That fulfills my goal of getting a car wash for Rob to fit his truck. I'm still working on a Chipotle target, airbrush for Deb.
Airbrush out.
What about the Aldi?
There's, yep, Aldi. I've never heard that. But we do have two major retailers looking at the old Sullivan's Plaza, they're doing, they're going through their due diligence period now, we can't announce them yet, we hope to do that within a month. We are having a Microsoft Teams meeting with someone that's doing that due diligence tomorrow, looking at where sewer and water come into the property and things like that. The owner of the property, not only because these major retailers are coming, but also to make the property more marketable for everybody, are planning on starting some improvements to redo the parking lot, redo the parking lot lights, in compliance with the UDO, and they're going to be removing the gas station and the tanks that were there. removing the gas station and the tanks that were there, um, which could open up that portion for an outlet for another retailer, fast food restaurant. We do have a lot of subdivisions in, under construction right now. Autumn Glen, Habitat for Humanities, building four homes in there. There's also people kicking the tires, if you will, to finish out the multifamily lots. Turtle Crossing, as you know, we have three different builders in there. Oak Grove Crossing, uh, two builders. One has been going in there, another one just bought several lots in there. Uh, that was Foxtail Properties, who were here this evening. I believe they bought six additional lots in Oak Grove to start in there. And then, uh, we have several calls, uh, and one serious one from someone that I worked with at a previous place, uh, looking at the Country Brook lots. Uh, this particular one that I used to work with, um, is looking at the duplex lots. And then, uh, two different people are looking at the single-family home lots. So-
Should be one in there.
Should be what?
Should be at least one interested person, because I'm on the Architectural Committee for the Country Brook subdivision. It was kicked to us.
Okay, good.
And then I said, "As long as they follow the city, I'm okay with it."
Good. We are giving them information for HOA contacts and things like that when we do get the call. So, that's good to know. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Can I add to, for that, the, we approved the, uh, ice cream truck not long ago. And I want to say I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from people that we've got an ice cream truck in town and have not had one for an extremely long time. Um, and I've seen many cases where the kids get super excited, including adults, running over to get an ice cream truck.
And I, my only objection to the ice cream truck is it seems to make a lot of rounds in my neighborhood. And it's the same song all the time.
God, he must feel-
Well, if you buy it, your answer-
Song, I was gonna go out and buy some.
Yeah, the answer, Lisa, is buy him out and then he'll go away.
All I can say is I've already been built for about 60 bucks worth of ice cream.
Any, any update on Starbucks? I'm sorry, Donovan. Any update on Starbucks?
They're currently going through, they have a microphone over there I should use, but they're going through their second round of reviews right now. So, we completed one rebound, one round of reviews, both building and engineering, sent it back, and we're waiting on that second submitted.
Thank you.
And Dunkin' Donuts, I have no update.
Yeah, well, they were there today. Someone was there today.
I rely on you for information.
Portopoli was standing, too. Was standing upright, so.
I think it's Jay that keeps knocking over.
No, 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 no.
And Donovan, just quick, is there something going on at Burger King?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because I've noticed that they're, they're, like, closed. Like, no lights, nothing.
I was just there for lunch today.
Yeah, I was there the other day.
Yeah.
I didn't want to call you out, but I didn't see the clock.
Okay, it must just be that, that they've had some maybe staffing issues, so they've closed early sometimes. I don't, they, maybe they've just closed early sometimes with, because of staffing.
It could've been. And, um, there's been some recent power outages. They could've been affected by that as well.
Okay.
I, I don't know what day that, that occurred, but, um, the one other thing I wanted to bring up regarding Starbucks, though, was, uh, Gary, um, and, uh, Christopher Burke, uh, had some further questions as far as the sidewalk requirement. Um, and, uh, that's also, uh, being, uh, sorry, Starbucks needs to, uh, the developer, sorry, needs to come through and, and, uh, figure that out before submitting, before we can bring it back to, uh, transportation.
Report is submitted. Uh, just an update on the, uh, painting of the water tower. The inside of the water tower has been done. We're looking to start to fill that up here this week. So, once we get it filled up, uh, sample, test, everything, and then we'll be back in the streets.
Thank you, Jim.
Um, report is submitted, but I also wanted to, uh, thank the mayor's office for the proclamation for National Public Works Week, which was last week. Uh, Lou provided lunch for the guys. Everybody liked it, although there were a few, uh, upset stomachs. Um, we've been doing work all over town. Uh, nice weather's been back around, so there's a lot of construction happening. Uh, we will be striping Ayer Street, doing the curb line, and putting up signage on Sage. Sage has been notified of all that stuff, uh, in the park, no parking that's coming. So, other than that, report is submitted.
How about, um, signs on Front Street?
Signs on Front Street, I put locates in. They're gonna go, they're gonna go in along with the curb work. So, uh, with the, with the striper, we're gonna be painting the curb yellow to match, um, to match the ordinance.
Perfect, thank you. Well, Rob's up there. I, I noticed something in the, um, in Cassette Agenda and, uh, the attachment, that the MFT resolution for public works maintenance and amount, you know, that went to DOT for 126,000. That didn't match any of the numbers I have, you know, in the budget or anywhere else, because, uh, you know, I, it's actually, I think, 300 and some-
Yes.
-that, that we get. So, I asked, uh, Deb about it and she explained it to me. But I just want to let her, anyway, for those that are keeping score at home, um, these numbers rarely match up for, for legitimate reasons. And it's just a, a subset of the maintenance that we report to DOT, not the whole thing.
Yes.
So, that's why, if you, if you notice that that was, seemed a little low, 126, uh, that's why.
This is, uh, so this is, in this line item, there are subsets of, uh, numbers that go for this. So, this is for the, uh, general maintenance, uh, which is the section number up here. These section numbers are different for different projects. So, this is general maintenance. So, this includes salt, uh, light maintenance on iDots lights and other, other sort of non-contracted small items. Road program comes out of that same line item. Will have a different, uh, section number, which will take money from that fund. So, uh, that's why the, the number asked for here is different than the overall number. Uh, this is just a subset of numbers that were discussed, uh, internally during the budgeting process.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's been a, it's a, um, Officer Monreal obviously started a few weeks ago. He's progressing, um, through FTO. Um, Officer Stahl was able to return to light duty, uh, two weeks ago. So, he's been working on stuff in the PD. And I got good news on Friday that, uh, Tom Brooks is returning from his military deployment and his first day back will be tomorrow. Um, he's, he'll do a few weeks of catching up. Obviously, he was gone when the Safety Act went into effect. So, he's got some catching up to do, as well as, um, get up to date on some of his training mandates, um, to be fully, fully certified. Um, other than that, report is submitted.
Thank you. PC, you have anything?
A couple of days away from Milk Days. Been looking forward to seeing you guys out there. Uh, I know we have some stuff coming up tomorrow and, uh, and Thursday, uh, out here on Ayer Street. Got some good news today from, uh, state police. They'll be coming out to assist us with traffic control for the parade. Uh, was getting a little nervous about that, to be honest, because I haven't heard anything from them in, like, three weeks. Um, but he finally replied today after weeks of nagging for me. Um, but we have, seems to have, we seem to have our ducks in a row coming up for the, uh, for the Milk Day weekend. And, uh, let's hope it's a safe, fun one and look forward to seeing you guys out there.
Thanks. The administrator.
So, just a couple of things. Um, as you notice on the agenda, the department heads' section was missed. Um, that is an oversight. Um, and on behalf of all staff, I apologize on that. As far as the anti-monotony request, that too, um, you know, we're not 100% accurate all the time. We tried to do our best. Uh, we had, uh, some serious issues that were on the agenda. So, we were preparing, um, a lot of time and resources to get ready for , uh, tonight's meeting. And, uh, smaller items like this, um, are, may have missed the meeting agenda, but they're not forgotten. Um, our clerk here, uh, Lori, does a great job of, of saying, "Hey, we missed this at times" and we, uh, immediately throw on the next agenda. Um, we have some new hires that start on June 3rd, two for, um, public utilities, uh, one in the, uh, city office, uh, Sarae. I keep saying that so I can keep, uh, saying her name correctly. And, uh, we also have, uh, Stacy Heiliger, our new public, or sorry, uh, Parks and Rec Superintendent will be starting, uh, as well as we have a promotion. Um, that is, uh, Jeanette being promoted to Deputy City Clerk. Um, that's all happening on the 3rd. It seems like the 3rd, uh, just hits for everything. Um, one thing for, uh, we received earlier today was the Harvard FC Espanol, uh, 2011. Uh, they were, they won the, uh, 2024 Illinois President's Club, uh, Cup, and will be, uh, representing, uh, the state at the Midwest President's Club, uh, Cup, where they will, uh, which is a national tourney. Uh, there will be teams from all over the Midwest. Uh, they have a minimum of five games guaranteed versus other states, which is a huge step forward. Um, and they are also looking for, uh, some help in, in paying for, for these costs. Um, anybody out there who's interested, please get ahold of Hugo Roldan, who is the Harvard FC Director. Um, if you need, uh, contact information, please, uh, reach out to me. I'd be happy to share that. Um, but this is, uh, a community, uh, organization that, that has achieved success. So, that is, uh, something that, uh, along with, like, wrestling and so on, we want to, uh, make sure everyone hears this. Um, one personal success I'd like to mention is, uh, last week, I was asked by the ICMA to be a speaker and presenter, uh, in Pittsburgh. Uh, that'll be, uh, later this year. Um, this is, not everybody gets asked. This was, um, a personal goal of mine as well. Uh, and it's, uh, to talk about, uh, city administration, uh, over the years. And having some experience in that, as well as experience in other states, uh, that's why they reached out to me. Um, the other thing I, I do want to, uh, two more things I wanted to mention. Uh, this past Monday, I'm sorry, a week ago Monday now, uh, thanks to Memorial Day, we had the, um, we had 190 students from the, uh, 4th grade class come in and tour the city office. This is the first time it's happened in quite some time. Uh, they spent time both in the, uh, on the administration side, here in the City Council chamber, and then they took a tour, um, through the, uh, PD. One of the nice things is, uh, I selected 11 students, 11 volunteers, uh, out of each group that came through to serve as both, um, alder, um, people, as mayor, as city administrator, city attorney, and city clerk. Um, Lori sat in and watched me, uh, conduct that. And I have videos, uh, because we actually put it up and ran it just like a, a City Council meeting, including public comments section, um, and, uh, new business. So-
Did the mics work?
Actually, the, that mic didn't work, um, at the time. But-
And did you have one of the students assigned to be the cranky member of the public?
Well, they, they were, they were quite well behaved. Um, but, uh, but last, based on some things that, that are heard tonight, I, I want to just emphasize again, my role is, is to advise, uh, similar to what the city attorney does. Um, you can take or not take my advice. That is strictly your call. Um, I do not control any of this, other than, um, manage the staff on a day-to-day basis. If I see an issue that could potentially lead to a legal issue, um, I do try to emphasize that a little bit more to avoid either public embarrassment or, uh, a potential lawsuit. But again, it is advice and advice only.
Lou, I-
Mayor, uh, report is submitted.
A couple of questions. Um, school district, uh, I know they've, uh, they've started their project at Jefferson. There's no impediments from the city, right? They are approved for what they're doing?
Yes.
And same thing with the, the, they're gonna be starting the soccer field, I think, June 10th? Everything's been approved for them to move forward with that?
Correct.
So, we can't be taking any flack if they were delayed at all? So, I just want to make sure on that. Next thing is, uh, last summer, um, uh, impact fees, we started discussion on that. And, uh, since it's summer now and the, and the school district should be able to have time, are we gonna try to set that meeting up so we can have that discussion with them? Okay, thank you.
Do we want to set up a community development meeting for this month? Or are we pushing that to Joe?
I, I think it would, it's, yes.
Okay. Um, I just figured, just get that done before we adjourn. Um, what does your calendar look like, Jay?
Joe?
Uh, Tuesday, the 11th. Are you okay with that?
Uh-huh.
Rosa, are you okay with that? Is there anybody else that would like to attend that as a conflict?
What time?
Uh, it'd be 6:30. That'd be our standard time. I just want to make sure that if anybody else is, really wants to come, that we afford them the opportunity to come. So, if there's a conflict that we need to adjust for, I'm willing to do that, even for non-committee members. We're good? All right, then we'll set it for-
I'll be online texting you.
All right, so we'll set it for Tuesday, June 11th, 6:30. And if there is something that anybody else would like added to the agenda, please let me know or let, uh, city staff know. Because if it's something that I'm not aware of or Jay's not aware of, I'm, I'm perfectly open to being made aware of it. My apologies.
Okay, 18:30 and 6:11. All right, uh, clerks' report.
I just kept upcoming meeting dates. Planning and Zoning Commission on June 4th is canceled due to a lack of agenda items. Tree Board meets Wednesday, Jan, June 5th at 6:30. Community and Economic Development meets Tuesday, the 11th at 6:30. Park Board meets Monday, the 17th at 6:00. And the next regular council meeting is Tuesday, the 25th at 7:00 PM. I don't know, were you guys gonna do a committee of the whole this month or are you gonna?
Well, let's, let's schedule it. What does the 20th look like for everyone?
I cannot do the 20th.
19th?
I'm okay with the 19th.
Matt?
Yeah, actually, that does work.
Charlie? Yeah. 6:30? Yeah.
7.
7? All right, 1900 then. On the 19th. That's Juneteenth, by the way.
Are we allowed to have a meeting on Juneteenth? So, that's a federal holiday now?
Federal holiday, but it's not a city holiday.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if that would work. Okay. It was made a feder-
Federal government.
Yeah, it's made a federal holiday.
Charlie, do you intend to have a transportation meeting this month, in June?
If you're in Cook County, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you asked. Hmm? I just wanted to make sure you- Oh. Okay, June, Juneteenth then, at, uh, 7 o'clock.
Okay.
All right. Uh, for the mayor's report, I really only have one thing, uh, to mention tonight, and that is, um, we're doing, uh, a listening tour for small business in Harvard. So, actually, what we're gonna do is we're gonna host a kind of a, a listening, um, opportunity for small business owners on June 17th. Uh, that's a Monday. It's gonna run from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We are going to reach out, uh, to individual business owners of, uh, small business in our community. And, um, there's an opportunity to RSVP. Um, Donovan has been kind enough to make some flyers. We're gonna be hosting this over at USMG, um, and utilizing their facility. The discussion is really gonna be about listening to small business owners and getting their input on economic development within the community from their perspective. And also give them some, uh, feedback from things that the city is working on, uh, in terms of economic development for small business, including what you just approved in terms of the revolving loan and other programs that may be available to help our businesses, uh, to expand and grow. Um, so, again, that's gonna be June 17th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, uh, and it'll be hosted over at USMG. And that's all I have this evening. I'll accept the motion to adjourn. So again, that's going to be June 17th from 9 to 11:00 AM. And it'll be hosted over at USMG. And that's all I have this evening. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. Clerk caller, roll.
All those are favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Good night.
I wanted this to pick it up.
Yeah, I know. I'm a little hard in here.
No, that's fine. I get it. I'm getting that way too, Charlie.
Oh, yes, that is the 17th, 9 to 11.
I just look at each other all day and say, what?
I'm sorry? Yeah, there was, something came up. He told me on the way into a meeting. They called and said they couldn't make it tonight. And so they asked to have it.
I still remember as a kid, my grandma-
No, I don't, I don't think that was the case. I think they just couldn't make the meeting tonight. But I, yeah. I haven't spoken to him, but that's what's- No, I don't, I don't think it's anything nefarious like that.
Hey, TJ?
Sorry.
Nothing on the agenda?
I almost feel like it's at the little, right there in Eastman, in front of the, at the very beginning of the building there. You know, like that could be, you know, Warren Way or- But whatever, I think it's a great idea.
That's at Starline, isn't it?
Yeah, I, yes, it's at Starline, that's right. I'm planning on making it, but I, I at least want to make an appearance right now.